Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 County Commission Meeting. Most of you already know this, but if you wish to speak on any item, please make sure you fill out a speaker card. Person's addressing the board shall have two minutes to complete his or her comments on each public hearing item for which he has filled, he or she has filled out a card. The Board requests that speakers appearing under the public comments section of the agenda limit their comments and/or presentations to matters under the Board's jurisdiction. It's the responsibility of me to determine the time limit and comments under public comment and other agenda items, and that are not quasi-judicial public hearings. So, the meeting is called to order. Is there, let's stand, please, and have Commissioner Felton lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keith Belcher, are you present, please? Thank you. Keith is with Space Coast Humanist, and he'll lead us in our dedication today.
Thank you, Commissioners, staff, and citizens of Brevard County for your commitment to upholding the principles and ideas of democracy and self-governance. As the year draws to a close, we are ensconced in a multitude of celebrations, holidays, here and around the globe. May we be mindful of the effect our actions and decisions in this room have on our community as a whole. May we strive to better the lives and opportunities for all our fellow citizens. Let us seek to build up, not tear one another down, to understand and not to dismiss, to personify the best of our shared humanity so we can leave a legacy that history may smile upon. To quote W.E.B. Du Bois, "Now is the accepted time, not tomorrow, not some convenient season. It is today that our best work can be done, not some future day or future year. It is today that we fit ourselves for the greater usefulness of tomorrow. Today is the seed time; now are the hours of work; and tomorrow comes the harvest and the playtime." Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll call this meeting to order. Do I have, do I hear a motion to, for approval of minutes for the last meeting?
Seven minutes.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there Mr. Vince Dyer here tonight? Vince, I think you have a presentation that you're going to present to us right now? Okay, come on up. Vince is the Program Manager with Best Foot Forward Pedestrian Safety Initiative, and what, what, who do you work for, Vince?
Yeah, so we're an organization called Bike Walk Central Florida. We're a nonprofit organization, and we are mostly dealing with making it safer for people who walk, bike, and roll.
Okay. Well, no more than five minutes at the absolute most, Vince, but go ahead. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to come and speak to you today. So, as I mentioned, Bike Walk Central Florida is a nonprofit organization, and we are trying to make communities more walkable, bikeable, and rolable. So, we are, with the help of Florida Department of Transportation, expanding, hopefully, into Brevard, Volusia, and Marion Counties. This is part of the Target Zero Initiative, which many of you are probably already very familiar with. They are trying to reduce deaths in Florida related to transportation to zero, and we are part of that initiative in terms of pedestrian safety. So, our program, the Best Foot Forward Program, we are based off of studies done right here in Florida, University of Gainesville in 2013, as well as St. Petersburg in 1998. They took a multifaceted approach, research from Dr. Ron Van Houten, combined engineering, education, and enforcement together to try to make pedestrian crosswalks safer, and this study has been repeated multiple times, Ann Arbor, Michigan, and St. Paul, Minnesota, in 2018 with success, showing that you can increase the yield rate of drivers to pedestrians at crosswalks following that method. So, our motto is that if we can get more drivers to stop for pedestrians in crosswalks, then more pedestrians will want to use crosswalks. We see pedestrians all the time just crossing wherever they want to cross, and we ask them, "Why do you cross there? Use the crosswalk." And they say, "We don't feel like the crosswalk's any safer." So, we're trying to change that mentality, and our focus is on driver yield rates. If we focus on driver yield rates, that's going to be the number-one thing that's going to cause pedestrians to want to use these crosswalks. So, we've had a bunch of success over time. Right now, we have a footprint in Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties. We've seen increases, seventeen percent, eighteen percent, nineteen percent there, depending on the type of neighborhood that we're in, and so our success is something that we're constantly trying to tout in terms of what we can do for the community. So, on crosswalks that are less than forty miles an hour, when we started in 2012, only seventeen percent of drivers were yielding. Right now, at Program Crosswalks, it's up to fifty-two percent, and same with roads forty miles an hour and higher, started at two percent when we started, up to forty-three percent now. So, massive amounts of improvement in terms of pedestrian safety in the areas that we've serviced. So, what we're trying to seek today is a resolution of support from you guys. We want to build a coalition, schedule workshops with our partners right here in Brevard County, have steering committee meetings, do our baseline reports, so that way the engineers right here can get the data they're looking for in terms of how safe their crosswalks are and whether or not any interventions need to be had. So, our four-E approach, which I mentioned just a little bit ago, the first one is evaluate. What we do is we set up a dilemma zone. We put a flag ahead of the crosswalk based on the speed limit. It's a very forgiving amount, so unless a car, as a cars coming up to it, we'll start crossing. If they've already passed it, we don't count it. So, we want to make sure it's safe for drivers, and we want to make sure it's safe for our data collectors. So, we'll go out, we'll take baseline data at these crosswalks, we'll count the amount of drivers that are yielding versus not yielding, and then we'll report back to our engineering partners on the progress of those locations to see if there's any kind of upgrades they'd like to make in those areas. We also do enforcement operations. So, with the Sheriff's Office, we'll get together with them, run high-visibility enforcements. We help create media visibility. We get in contact with local news media. We're on the news regularly. We do these every quarter, and we'll put out big social media blitz, trying to get the word out about the crosswalks, so that way no one's surprised. We're not trying to trick anybody. We want them to know that this is happening, and we've seen massive improvements just from enforcement alone, and then when you add the engineering changes on top of that, that's where you get the biggest bang for your buck overall. So, the engineering would be the step after enforcement. We recommend a number of different road markings and signs that could help improve the intersection based on the unique characteristics of those crosswalks. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of solution. It has to do with the speed limit, the number of lanes, whether it's mixed residential use, commercial use, et cetera, and so we'll recommend those, up, those changes, so that way our partners are getting some feedback on what we're seeing out in the field. And then we'll do a variety of outreach. So, we go to schools, we do tabling events, we'll do presentations for neighborhood HOAs for businesses, so that way we can spread the message both to pedestrians and to drivers. We'll also create digital feedback for everybody on our social media and our website. So, in terms of funding this program, we're actually not here today to ask you guys for money. We've already been funded by Florida Department of Transportation for two years, so all we're looking for today from you guys is just your approval for us being here and doing the work to make the community safer. We'll be doing this for two years here in Brevard County, and at that time, if Brevard County likes the work we're doing, then they'll be able to choose to continue funding, which can come through a variety of sources. Some of our partners pay through engineering, some pay through enforcement, and some pay through their government office itself.
Thank you, Vince.
Yep, that's it.
Morris, do we need a motion to approve to, for them to continue on doing business here?
You're looking for a resolution from the Board?
Yeah, not today, but yes, that is what we're looking for.
Okay. Well, good. Thank you so very, very much for coming tonight. We appreciate the, the input. Let's go ahead and move on to, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to take questions.
Yeah, for, for Mr. Dyer. All right. Thank you so very much. We appreciate your comments tonight.
I look forward to speaking to you guys in the future. Thank you.
All right, great. We're going to move on to the consent agenda, and Commissioner Tobia has asked that we pull F-12 on sports grants, and I believe that's in front of us, and Commissioner Tobia, turn the floor over to you.
Chair, do you want to handle all of the other ones?
Yeah, that'd be fine. That would be great. So...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus F-12.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Tobia, seconded by Commissioner Felton, to approve the consent agenda other than F-12. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. The motion carries. Commissioner Tobia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The funds for sports grants come from the marketing section of the tourist development funds, and one applicant doesn't even include any marketing expenses whatsoever. Six applicants have a recommendation grant amount that is somewhere between two and seventeen times higher than the event's entire marketing budget. While this may be consistent with the guidelines, it is probably not the best use of marketing funds. Second of all, just because the sports subcommittee and the TDC vote to approve does not necessarily mean that this Board should make the same mistake that those advisory committees have made. A budget that was miscalculated by more than $100,000 received an average score of 7.8 of 10 by those committees, including two perfect scores of 10. Normally, I just vote no on these, but having reviewed these budgets a little bit more in depth, in depth, I think some are so bad that there's an opportunity to convince some of you to join me in denying some of these sports grants. I have done an outline of the sports grants and the numerous issues, the, the basic budgetary issues that are located in here, any of which I would be more than willing to go over. The one that I was referring to with the $100,000 miscalculation, that's the Space Coast Spring Games softball tournament. Their profit is somewhere between $2,000 and $101,000, depending on which numbers, you know, that you used back there. You can see that, that they have an actual revenue of $215,000, an estimated expense of $116,000, yet they show a profit of $2,000. I'm not very good at math, but I know when you take 116 out of 215, you end up with a little bit more than $2,000. You've got another one, which was, I, I thought was really interesting, the Smooth Runnings LLC, which has two grants on here totaling $18,000. Remember, we asked for their budgets. This gentleman provided us with his expenses, but when questioned, he replied that his revenue was quote-unquote proprietary. Now, I'm not certain that this Board, or any Board, should be giving public dollars to a entity that determines that their calculations are proprietary. Now, just to be clear, this is a triathlon. I don't know how revenue at a triathlon is proprietary, and if it is, again, I don't think that we probably should be going forward with that. We've got the Space Coast Clash Soccer Tournament here, which is showing a profit of almost $40,000, yet this Board is, is, is giving $12,000 to increase that profit. The East Coast, the ESA, whatever that stands for, Southern Regional Surf Competition, not-for-profit, they're also not so good at math, they're, based on their numbers, they're showing a negative profit of $2,325, or a positive process of $675, or as much as $15,675. If you look at the first entry fee, you'll see, or the first entry line, I'm disappointed that this made it all the way to us, but they have, this is the last page here, it's pretty blatant, 250 estimated admissions for a total of $44,000, but the total of that $44,000 decreases to 26. I don't know where that money went, but none of these numbers here add up to, to anything, which is fine, but I don't know that we should be using our, our, our resources to fund bad math. So, some of these are worse than others. These are just the highlights. We could go over any of those in detail, and again, this is just what, with my limited math, I came up with, but I wanted to see where the rest of the Board is on, on, on the ones that are proprietary, the ones that have bad math, or even the ones that, that actually the math adds up.
Okay, thank you. We have any questions from the Board on, for Mr. Tobia? Mr. Krantis, do we have any comments that you'd like to make at this particular point in time, or is there anybody from these organizations that are here that would like to address the Board?
Mr. Chair, I know there are some people in the audience from some of these events. A lot of these event organizers are from out of state, so unfortunately couldn't make it, but there are some that are here, but if there are specific questions for, on a specific event, I can see if they're here.
All right, well, thank you. County Manager Abadi, didn't we receive a letter from Mr. Varnes? Did, did we receive a letter from Mr. Varnes saying he couldn't be here? Is Mitch Varnes here tonight? I think we, I thought we received a letter from him stating what was his position on this, but I've, I've not seen it, if we have, but there's, there's no letter.
I haven't, I haven't seen it this afternoon.
Okay, well, thank you very much, then.
There's, there's one that was sent to Peter. I don't know if it was sent to the Board, however.
Peter, is that a letter from Mitch Varnes?
Yes, sir. It did go to the Board, yes.
Do you have it in front of you?
I do not.
Got it. Thank you. Oh, you're Rob? You don't look like Rob. You're a lot prettier than Rob. Okay, well, there we go. We'll get rid of that one in a minute. All right, Peter, you have that in front of you?
Yes, sir.
You feel comfortable reading it, please?
Sure.
It's a public document, so if you would...
This was to, this was sent to all the Commissioners. Mr. Varnes says, "I am a Satellite Beach resident, native Brevardian, and writing to you and other Commissioners ahead of Tuesday's Commission Meeting. I have two events, April 14th, Cocoa Beach Triathlon and Doathon, and the April 28th, 2024 USA Beach Running Championships. They've been approved and tentatively awarded grants by the TDC Sports Committee. It's notified today that the TDC Commissioner has requested a copy of the Cocoa Beach Triathlons P&amp;L for the last three years. I've been producing significant sporting events all over the Space Coast for close to 20 years. I've personally never heard of such a request. Contracts with my sponsors and in some cases contractors are proprietary information, and my agreements and contractors with them specify such. It's always been my understanding that tourism grants are awarded based on out-of-area attendees, room nights, and positive economic impact, two, and the marketing of Space Coast communities. These are standards which I've met or exceeded based on my pre-event projections at every event, which I've ever applied for or received a TDC grant. The Cocoa Beach Triathlon is a prime example, as it has annually drawn several hundreds of out-of-towners to our hotels, restaurants, stores, et cetera, for a weekend at the beach and elsewhere around the county. I believe any profits or losses of an event should have little bearing on tourism grants. The pandemic was particularly hard on live event producers, and many sporting events are still well below their pre-pandemic numbers. Any grants I have previously received have been justified, valued, and always an important part of mission success. I'll be traveling out of country, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm writing to, personally unable to attend, I'm writing to express my concerns and thoughts to you now."
All right, well, thank you. Commissioner Pritchett, I believe your light's on.
Thank you, sir. A couple of thoughts on this, and just from a time period before we had the pleasure of you gentlemen, we sent the major sports events back to the people that were applying for grants so that they would give us better data, and this data really is lacking. I had Mr. Krantis pull some numbers together. I did note, a lot of them, they put revenues down thinking it was incoming, and it, it was just messy. So, I'm going to recommend we send these back, because these are not small grants, these are major. They might be classified under sports, but they're, they're large grants, and I get it, they're tourism dollars, but they're still taxpayers, and it's our job to really look over this and make sure they're getting in good information. So, Mr. Varnes, what he does, I like what he does, but I mean, if, if you want to get 25,000 grant funds, you just got to kind of put it in. You're allowed to make money, it's all right if you're putting the heads in the beds. Commissioner Tobia, I know you, you brought up the, the softball one, but they are bringing 3,400 room nights, but they got to get better data to us. I, I completely understand your position, and I would vote with tabling this, sending it back, and having them come back with better information. Mr. Krantis helped me a little bit, but there was almost like an operating expense that was just so high, and that's the things I look for, because it's like a miscellaneous expense, let's throw everything in, it's nobody ask, and, and I don't like that. So, I kind of want to know what they're doing. I would still like if we do these, and we talked about it on the large, the large events, that instead of doing all these reimbursements, we just pay for the advertising outside of the area, because then we're actually accomplishing what we're trying to do. But I would support if we want to send this back and have them do a little bit more work so we can kind of get a good look at it, but I, I'm not going to vote this through. I, I think it, it was not enough time spent on the people that were applying for it. It might be our problem because we didn't specify this to them, but we did do it for the large events, so that's going to be my request.
Do you have a motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I move to continue this item to the 9:00 AM regular Board Meeting on December 19th, 2023. Mr. Chair, I'm not, I don't know these grants, or, or sorry, not these grants, these activities well enough to question the numbers, so I, I don't know what, you know, markers cost an event. I, I, I'm not questioning any of that. What I'm questioning is the third-grade math here that was presented to not only the committee but the Board here, and the math is absolutely atrocious to turn around and have a body of aid ask us for $100,000. So, just make sure the numbers add up, and then I'll let the wiser folks up here say, you know, really, administration shouldn't cost that much, or the marker shouldn't cost that much, but at least make the math work, and I'll tell you right now, whether, I cannot, I cannot, in good conscience, use tax dollars to an entity that says revenue is, is proprietary. So, whether it adds up or not, it's missing half of, half of the, the budget as far as I'm concerned, so that's, that's a large issue.
I believe there's a motion on the floor. You want to second the motion, Commissioner Tobia?
I made the motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Felter, second. Commissioner Felton, I believe your light's on, or was on.
That was me.
Are you still on?
I'm Felton.
You're Felton.
Remember up there?
You two are not, okay, we've changed seats, so that's why we're a little confused up here. She's Rob Felton tonight, just in case you wanted to know, and this is Rita Pritchett. All right, so, you're back on, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I, I would love doing that, and maybe, Mr. Krantis, we can give you the direction, that you give them the same format that we gave the large events for them to come back with that data for us.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments in regards to this? If not, we'll, we'll move on. All right, well, thank you. Oh, yes, there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded to ask Peter Krantis to, to send them back to reorganize the way they presented their information, and it should be presented maybe at the, whenever it's available, Mr. Krantis, if you would. All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. I believe we are finished with the consent agenda items. Thank you. And I think we're going on to public hearings on G1, Amendments to Chapter 122, the waterways, anchoring limitation areas. Pardon me?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you had cards.
Yes. Oh, there's cards here on that?
I'm not sure.
I don't know yet.
I didn't see any G1s.
There's just, this is a new batch.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
In case. Nope, we're good to go.
All right, we have no cards, no comments from the audience in regards to this. There's no, anybody from the Commission have any comments? Yes, sir.
No, I think Amanda's going to introduce it.
Amanda, hi, how are you? Nice to see you over there. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you earlier.
No, I'm happy to give you a short introduction.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. Item G1 is the public hearing for amendments to Chapter 122 entitled Waterways to Allow For the Establishment of Four Anchoring Limitation Areas Near the O'Gally and Melvern Causeways, and the Expenditure of Up to $10,000 of Brevard Boding Improvement Funds for the Installation of Markers and Buoys, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the Commission?
Motion to approve?
There's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Tobia. Tobias. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. G2, Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 82, Brevard County Code of Ordinances to Mandate Criminal History Record Checks for Specified Positions of Employment by Certain Outside Contractors for Service or Vendors. Who's going to take this? Melissa, is that you? You're going to take this one?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Let's go.
This is a public hearing to adopt a new section of Section 82 of the County Code mandating criminal history record checks. The ordinance is required to request a Florida 9 ORI number from the FBI and continue with criminal history record checks in accordance with county policy. Since legislative intent was passed by the board in October, I've been working with FDLE on the ordinance language, which was attached to the agenda for your review. It is requested that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the amendment to Chapter 82 of the Brevard County Code of Ordinances, creating a new section, 8217, mandating state and federal criminal history record checks as stated.
Okay, is there anybody that would like to speak on this from the commission? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve?
There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Tobias. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Okay, we are now going into the red shirts, the unfinished business. Before we get started on this, I'd just like to say a couple of things. We appreciate you being here. We're going to let everybody speak. We've limited the time, since there's so many of you, to two minutes, but everyone will have an opportunity to speak to this situation tonight. Now, I know that we have City Councilman Ditmore here, and I know he's got another appointment that he needs to get to, so I'm going to take, I'm going to move Commissioner, Councilman Ditmore up to the first comment, and then we'll go the way they signed in. So Commissioner, Councilman Ditmore, you want to come up and, and you have two minutes, sir?
Sure. Thank you, sir, I really appreciate that. I have a council meeting to go to. John Ditmore, City of West Melbourne City Council. Just want to start off by saying I support the Live Local Act initiative of our state legislature, or at least in theory. However, I'm concerned about the Live Local preemptions relating to the commercial industrial zone properties. Live Locals written can and most likely will systematically eradicate commercial and industrial zoning in communities, effectively removing their future economic value. The potential for business and job creation will be lost. There's no caps on this program. All available commercial and industrial property are up for grabs. Two additional locations have already been identified by other developers in West Melbourne's prime commercial location. And by the way, this just happened since your last commission meeting, and two of the three of those, two of the three locations now are now in District 5, so.
Oh, joy.
Yes, you'll probably be getting more calls, so. Once these prime commercial locations are gone, we can't get them back, and the economic impact cannot be reversed. This developer on this project is asking for a $16 million bond by only providing the minimum impact to families in need, 20% or 21 apartments in this case. The other 80% are at the 120% AMI. Impact on the public good is at the very minimum. 80% of the project targets seniors or retirees making a minimum income of $77,000. The rental numbers are roughly the same as the market rate for a one-bedroom apartment in the City of West Melbourne. No attempt by the applicant to utilize the many multifamily zone properties has taken place. It's not the spirit of the Live Local Act. Although I know that you cannot address the Live Local Act, Senate Bill 102 here, that you have no control over that, I would just ask that this time you exercise your authority to deny the bond request. The City of West Melbourne has an agenda item tonight for a moratorium on the, for the Live Local Act. Until such time, the council can enact ordinances and policies related to that legislation. Should this pass at the, at the city level, the city will then work to address mixed-use requirements and other items related to Senate Bill 102.
Thank you, Councilman, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for giving me in first, I appreciate it, thanks.
Okay. Now, I do appreciate your enthusiasm, and I understand the passion tonight, but I'm going to ask not to be, have any applause, not to be, have any screaming and yelling and hollering in, in favor of what people have to say, but we'll do it in an adult-like manner tonight and try to do the best we can to get through this. I know it's a very passionate issue, but if you would please restrain from that, we would very much appreciate it. We do have Scott Culp here, the developer. Scott, did you want to make any comments prior to the time that we move in? Yes, come on up, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time to come before you tonight, and I thank you for the opportunity you presented for us to also have the community meeting with the neighbors, and we did have that on this past Thursday night, as I think as, as most of you are aware. I provided you with a package very similar to the PowerPoint that we provide to the community meeting on this past Thursday night, and I wanted to go through just a few of the items on that. And if I could use your projector here, I don't know if, putting things down in here, there we go. Bring it up correctly. The Venue at Heritage Oaks is a community that we're proposing to be a seniors affordable housing community financed with the tax incentive bonds allocated through the Brevard County Housing Finance Authority. We're proposing a building on a commercial parcel utilizing the Live Local legislation that empowers us to be able to develop affordable housing on commercially zoned properties. This picture before you is a community that we just opened this year with a very similar architectural style to that we're proposing for Venue at Heritage. I think you're, everybody is aware of the site location, so I won't go over, belabor that with you, but the site does have installed stormwater retention stub outs for water and sewer to the site on a four-lane divided roadway with a signalized intersection. We're proposing a site plan that utilizes the existing permitted curb cuts and access points, the existing retention, stormwater retention area that's been permitted, and a site plan that we think will meet all the requirements, code requirements, for the City of West Melbourne. The incomes, I think they made mention of, that those are governed by the bond regulations. 20% of the units will be at 50% of the median income, and the balance will have a maximum of 120% of median income. The most important thing, I think, is to consider the demand for affordable housing in Brevard County. Do I get additional time as the applicant, or is that?
No, not, 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 not in this particular instance tonight, but we will, I do think we might have a couple of questions from the board real fast that, that I think need to be answered. Does anybody have any questions, or are we?
And I can come back afterwards if you want me to answer questions after the public comment.
Commissioner Goodson?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question, you started out last meeting, numerous things were said about affordable housing, but now you've changed to, to just go for senior citizens, is that correct?
We are under the particular development plan that we have now. We're proposing to restrict the occupancy of this community for seniors in accordance with the Housing for Older Persons Act. That is correct.
And what reasoning is that?
We encourage senior developments, we like senior developments, we think there's a demand. The demand analysis from the Schimberg Center shows that there is a strong demand for affordable seniors housing, and we believe that it's appropriate for this location.
And is it true, have you turned your site plan in yet?
We have had a pre-application meeting with the City of West Melbourne. We have not completed a formal site plan submittal application for the city.
And when will that be done?
We're proceeding with that immediately, so that, you know, a matter of weeks, assuming that we get the approval to move forward.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Sharon.
All right. Thank you very much, and I'm certain if, if we have any additional questions, we'll call you back up, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, the next up is Patricia McWherter. Patricia, please.
Good evening. Thank you, I wasn't planning on being first, but I live at 2271 Loon Court, West Melbourne, Florida, and I live in the Eastwood subdivision of Heritage Oaks. I am retired, and, as of last year, and before that, I spent 40 years working in the field of social work and social services. But anyway, I'm here to address you today, and I appreciate all the work that you all do for us. What I'm asking for today is a no vote on this Venue at Heritage Oaks, since the Senate Bill 102 preempts all the locals' decision-making and enforcement. It also favorly, heavily favors the developers, and it allows the developers to bypass local building restrictions on building height, capacity, and zoning. So a no vote would send a message back to the lawmakers, and also perhaps set a precedence for the rest of the state, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Robert Klimowski.
I'm going to let the West Melbourne people speak.
Okay. Are you in support or in opposition to the motion tonight?
I'll speak in public comments, okay? Is that okay?
Oh, you want to do it in public comments? Have you filled out a card in the back for that? If, well, you filled out one for speaking now, so you can either speak now or wait till the red shirts are finished.
All right, I will speak then.
I like red shirts, by the way, I have a few. Okay, Robert, go ahead, I apologize, we just need to do this the correct way. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, esteemed board. I appreciate you guys taking the time out of your day to listen to this. So SB 102 preemption, and I, I think that we have to look at where that spirit and what that really comes from as well. It's not right. I don't like preemption, I like affordable housing. And this particular project, I think the biggest issue is the traffic. If you look at the traffic, that's an issue, but what can you guys do about that? We're talking about bonds here, and if these people, they're very, very passionate about this, and it makes me feel really good that the community is rising up, but the legislator is a place to go to talk about this, and I wish that we could have more power here, or if we could direct more willingness for SB 102 to be looked at next legislative session, and how that would be about purview of this board. Would that be something you guys could draft? Would that be something you guys could write to say, "We're having an issue with SB 102, we're having an issue with Florida Housing Finance Corporation proving the bonds," and then people coming here, which I believe the next agenda item, Commissioner Tobias, is going to address that through a public hearing in that locality, because right now it's mailed out to that area of Cocoa, when it's not directly mailed out to the West Melbourne citizens. Another option is to have a we or an advisory board for West Melbourne, such as a Urban Development Center, an improvement center, where they could have more public awareness about affordable housing, but yet, that's West Melbourne. Here, I am for the project, other than the traffic. I think that 120 AMI, although high, it's what's under the law, and it's what you guys, what we as a representative democracy have voted for, people to vote for. We vote for those people in, they vote for something, we should go to the legislation in Sen, in the Senate and House in the state of Florida, and then talk to them there, and if that's something you guys can do, I'd love that. Thank you for your time.
So to answer your question real quickly, we do not have any jurisdiction over the state legislature. What's going to have to happen is if you want to change Senate Bill 102, you're going to have to go find somebody to run for the Florida Legislature, or a state representative now, and a state senator and pass glitch, a glitch amendment, or a new amendment, so we can't, we can't.
Ten seconds to.
You have, real quickly, we have a lot of people.
Can't you direct the county attorney or somebody, I've seen other counties and other cities direct their staff to write a letter to?
No, sir. No, sir. We cannot.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I appreciate it very much. Larry Limbaugh.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Gemma. Gemma is three years old. She loves Paw Patrol, Matt Queen, Abby Kadabby, and most of all, she loves Elmo. This is her, right there. And she's pretty, and she is as smart as Stephen Hawking. And me, I'm her andada, and she is my only grandchild. And I get to see her as often as I want to, as much as I want to, because I live in a federally funded, attractive housing complex that you can see from outside in the yard. A two-bedroom, two-bath commodious apartment, right here in Viera. You can almost see it. And the sunsets are an explosion of technicolor from the fourth floor. We have granite tabletops, we enjoy marble window sills, double-pane glass, and Berber carpet. And here's the rub. Andada, that's me, and Ganny, and Gemma could not be all together were it not for this project here in Viera. So keep the projects going, wherever they are, either in Brevard or elsewhere, so that more andadas, and more Gannys, and more Gemmas can hug each other all they want, because these building projects you are developing are not drawing in riffraff, they are drawing families together. Thank you.
May I ask, are you in favor of us passing the bond or opposed to it? Just.
Well, I got the red shirt memo a little too late.
Ah ha, okay, I got it. All right, well, we'll take that red shirt as a yes, then.
Yes, correct, thank you.
All right. Sue Tindall. Is there a Sue Tindall here? Oh, there you are.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity.
Would you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you so much.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity. I also live at the venue at Viera Senior Living Apartments. It's located at Wyndham and, Wyndham Way and Stadium, a very busy area, but we have the privilege of living in this wonderful property across from multimillion-dollar homes. We have beautiful scenery, we have, like Larry was saying, gorgeous apartments. I, I hope I can reassure people that this isn't riffraff, it's grandmas and grandpas, and it, it's just affordable housing that, that benefits us all. I don't have any doubt at all that the Heritage Project is going to be any different. I know they have traffic issues, but that, I'm sure will be laid to rest, and something will happen with that, but we're just grandma and grandpas, we're not riffraff, you know, we want, we get a chance to see our grandkids, and I invite anybody out to go and look at the facility, it's just beautiful, and thank you very much.
Thank you. So just to make sure now that I was saying that you are, you want us to continue on and vote yes to approve the bond, so that you can.
Yes, absolutely.
Continue affordable housing for seniors.
Yeah, 33% of the time.
Okay, okay, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go on, but thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
We appreciate it. Is that Alicia Hickey? That's so good, thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am very much in favor of this new Heritage Oaks project, because being able to come home to the serenity of my apartment at Venue at Viera is a benefit of living, of living in the senior community. I don't have to deal with screaming kids or trash throughout the property. The affordability of the rent helps me with my ability to pay my other monthly bills, such as electricity and food. It also affords me the little luxuries of having cable and internet in my home. Living amongst people my own age and being able to share life stories over coffee or a glass of wine helps me to deal with the daily boredom, and like I said at the start, I'm very much in favor of another senior housing project, because it's very much needed in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alicia, we appreciate your comments. Okay, I think this is Nicholas that lives on Dufrockin Lane. Ah ha, there you go. Your handwriting is a lot like a doctor's.
Yes, I was raised by two doctors.
Ah ha, there you go. That's why this, I couldn't read this prescription.
So, my name's Nicholas Ackman, I'm an attorney. I just wanted to reiterate that the purpose of these meetings is TAPRA, and it's under a federal statute under the tax code. a federal statute under the tax code to make sure that funding is used for appropriate sources and for appropriate use to serve the need of the community. This is definitely a need of the community. It will definitely be served under Section 142 of the code. It will be bonds. It will be used for a public need and will serve affordability and attainable houses for the community as a whole.
Okay, thank you very much, Nicholas. Appreciate your comments.
Good afternoon, Brevard County Commissioners. I wanted to thank Commissioner Pritchett for pausing the approval of bonds until the developer could meet with all of us. It was an excellent meeting. He had, he had a venue that seated 45 people, and double that amount of people showed up. We are not against affordable housing. We all know that we need it. The problem is the traffic in this particular location. That's all that I'm complaining of, and it seems to be the majority of the people that are in our six subdivisions and 700-plus homes. So all I'm asking is that after this developer showed his site plan, the traffic study that was presented was outdated. So if you, you said to us that you are approving the proper presentation of the forms for you to vote on the bond. I just think the traffic study needs to be repeated at today's influx of new residents, and it has to be more than just two hours in the morning and two hours in the evening. It really should have that black ticker thing that goes across the road and does account for, to give an accurate study of what is going on on this particular piece of property. Again, I am for affordable housing. I may be there someday myself, but I'm just saying, you can't have it if the, if the roads don't support the traffic. The problem with this particular site is that there's one road, there's one exit on Mitten, a tiny little exit and entrance that is shared with a memory center, and then there's one on Heritage Oaks Boulevard, which is a closed road. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and listening to me.
Thank you. Justin, where are you?
Yes, right here.
Come on up, buddy. I appreciate our conversation the other day on the phone.
Thanks. That was great. Thank you. Okay, I'm Justin Lauer. I'm here this evening because you have a decision to make. You were elected here by the people of Brevard County. These people pay taxes, they pay your salaries, and they'll be here for your votes. Today, we're going to find out if you're going to vote with the residents of Brevard County or you're going to vote with special interest dollars coming from outside the county. Those people are going to leave with their profits. They're not going to be here next November in 2024 to vote for you, but we will. The issue here has to do with what's going on on the land, okay? That we're going to put a four-story building at that corner that's not congruent with anything in that area right there. There's over 700 single-family homes connected to that road. Although it may be legal and allowable, it's not the right thing to do. There's bills that get passed all the time, right? Obamacare was passed. People had to read through it before they understood what the bill was, and they realized the, the fallacies of it, okay? Now, just like with the Senate Bill 102, it just got passed. We found out what's in the bill. Now we need to correct it. If DeSantis doesn't correct it, he's going to get crushed in the primary. In the next six months, he's going to take a look at this and do the right thing and make some adjustments in there. It's wrong that the state comes in and takes commercial property and bypasses all the zoning of the local city to put it into effect. All of these cities have zoning boards. They have comprehensive plans that they've worked on for years, and this 102 is trying to circumvent all of that. It's wrong. It's going to get exposed. The congressperson in Naples that put this forward is going to get exposed, and I have confidence in the great state of Florida that this will get fixed in the upcoming months and this will get corrected. We just need some time for that to happen. Tonight, please vote no. Be a leader here in Brevard County and do the right thing. Other counties will join you. Other cities will join you. We need a no vote tonight to send a message. If you don't do it tonight, this bill could preempt and take all the commercial property from any county in the state of Florida.
All right, thank you.
This is a county issue, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay, Susie Kaczynski. Hi, Susie, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for having me here. Susie Kaczynski, 2133 Woodfield Circle. The question before you tonight is whether to vote yes or no to the bond. I, I believe the answer is no and that there are several issues that you should be thinking of. First, the HFA resolution that approved the bond stated, and I quote, "It promotes the health and welfare of the citizens of Brevard and will thereby serve the public purpose." I believe, on the other hand, the bond does not. And second, as Commissioner Steele pointed out, were the papers filed properly? Again, I believe no. On the health and welfare of the public citizens, I contend that the bond does more harm than good and therefore does not benefit the public, and here's why. Only 20% of the proposed 105 units are going to be set aside as affordable housing. The other 80% are not. I don't, in exchange, you're asked to authorize approximately $17 million in bonds. And I ask you, is that a financially and fiscally responsible use of taxpayer dollars? Dollars that you help to control? And who does it hurt? At a minimum, the 735 families in the five communities in Heritage Oaks. You've heard all the reasons about that in the past, but it goes beyond those 735 families. Approving the bond negatively impacts the entire city, as this 40- to 65-foot-high building will forever mar the look and feel of our community of West Melbourne. As one of the council members put it to me, if we'd wanted an apartment on that corner, we would have approved that one when it was proposed last year, and that was just a three-story building. And incidentally, or moving on to the paperwork, I sent you all an email regarding the inconsistencies, namely that the HFA application asked if the developer or principal and/or general partner have been found in noncompliance. You have the information. I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Velma.
Okay, I'm Vel Decker, 1621 Brookshire Circle, West Melbourne. I have rented for all but nine years of my life. As a 65-year-old woman with a disabling pain condition, I embrace the use of the property off Mitten Road in West Melbourne for 55 and older apartment homes or assisted living facilities. But the proposal submitted by the venue at Heritage Oaks is deeply flawed and frankly rapacious. The incomplete, ambiguous, overly narrow submissions by the company do not demonstrate the long-term financial viability of the project. The memorandum of agreement forming a legal relationship between Brevard and the county does not provide any meaningful detail or financial controls to assure the proposed transactions will have no negative financial impact on the county. Do not let the company or its partners, Southern Affordable Services, pull at your heartstrings. They are presenting a bond proposal without specificity but high risk. On November 29, the company stated it would not consider a two-story complex because it did not meet their price point for the property. The company and its partners care only about money. They don't care about the community or seniors like me, who would suffer a loss of personal property value after construction of a concrete monolith winding wildly out of keeping with an already welcoming and partly, an apartment-friendly community. The most significant flaw in the incomplete financial submissions is the complete absence of a comprehensive maintenance plan and related specification of capital reserve requirements for the life of the building and housing project that should be 40 years, not 15. In the interest of time, I respectfully request that my more detailed comments and concerns on the long-term financial viability of the proposal and its financial impacts to Brevard be amended to the public record. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, may I submit this?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Sandra Sullivan. Ah-ha, you're not wearing your hat tonight. Good evening.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So my request tonight would be to reject the government bond so that the developer has to apply to the state for bonds. In this way, this would give the city of West Melbourne the most opportunity to work with the developers to incentivize a better location via HB 1339, given the preemption of local rule for SB 102. I do want to point out that under SB 102 as well, that according to state law, it still has to conform to concurrency. So the issues with the traffic haven't been resolved yet. Also, I think they don't actually own that property when I looked up the, the owner of that property. But as an aside, I find SB 102 to be very egregious. I understand it's, it's a state law, but what I would urge you all to do, like the, the mandated vaccines that came from the federal government, what did we do? We pushed up from the local level against overreach of the federal government. And the same thing here for the state government. This is overreach of the state government. They push back. Affordable housing, when we're talking about this, is SB 102. When I think affordable housing, we're thinking low income. No, this is middle America housing. So when we look at, that is the largest market. So when we look at a 75% discount on property taxes, of course, we're going to have lots of companies come here for this. But let me ask you something. From a taxpayer fiscal standpoint, you ought to be pushing back against these projects because somebody has to pay for fire, police, county services, impact fees. And then I learned at your last affordable housing meeting, it's being proposed, the county staff is proposing doing exemptions on impact fees. So not only for services, but now, you know, infrastructure. I mean, our roads. Well, that's it.
Thank you, Sandra. All right. Is this Ronaldo's? Ron Jicardis. Okay, Ron. I like Ronaldo better. It's kind of sophisticated.
Thank you for that comment. I am called Ronaldo in many places, although I'm taking the besheveled look right now. What the citizens have brought up are good points, and the ones who live there, I do not live in the area, but traffic is an issue. The traffic needs to be addressed. And then my biggest concern is only 20% of the units, which equates to about 20 units, are going to be allowed for senior living. That was not discussed at the last meeting, but now it's 20%. I say $16 million. Reduce it down to 20%. 20% financing only for the 20 units. And the next thing is, who's going to pay for the infrastructure as far as roads and so forth? And as somebody mentioned, impact fees. I'm frankly tired of paying, subsidizing people throughout the world here, not excluding our country, subsidizing everything for everyone when I had to do it the hard way. I got no subsidies. I'm paying for everything here. And that is my point here. I'm going to have to pay for the roads over there for infrastructure improvement and fire and so forth. And somebody will say to me, just like somebody in a municipality said, "Well, it's only a hamburger a week from McDonald's." Well, you know, that's not how it works. Don't take my money. I'm tired of this because it goes from one penny to the next, to the next, to the next in sneaker taxes, and it keeps going. I can afford it, but how many cannot? And I say that we should not do this at this point. There needs to be traffic study and impact on people in the area.
Thank you so much for your time. Katie Delaney. Back there waving your flag away. I almost wanted to stand up and start singing.
You should.
I would have, but I figured everybody would leave.
Thank you all for having us tonight. I am hoping that you all vote this down. Everybody agrees that we have a major housing crisis. But this SB 102 is a bad bill. It is a bad bill, and it's going to hurt the middle class. It's going to hurt the majority of people in our community. It's going to frankly destroy our community if we're not careful. It's our job as citizens, county commissioners, city council members, to push back on the higher levels of government when they overreach. That's our job. And I'm hoping that the county commission and the city governments around the state of Florida push back on the state because that's what needs to happen. You guys are here to be our representatives. You're here to be our voice. You're here to be our lobbyists. That's why you're here. You're not here to be a developers lobbyist. You're not here for any other purpose than to serve our needs and to spend our money wisely. So I'm asking you to please do what we elected you to do and stand up for the people. Thank you.
Peter, Peter Fukas. It's an old, familiar face coming up here. Hello, Peter.
How you doing, Jason? Good to see you up there with your experience and commitment to the community. It's a great place for you to be.
It's not going to help you lobby me to vote whichever way you want, but go ahead if you would.
I, I, I actually don't have an opinion on this. And the reason I'm here is I'm just curious. By the way, I'm, this, I'm not here because of the Budget Review Committee. I'm here as a citizen taxpayer.
Okay.
In the interest of transparency, I want you to know that I've worked with Angela Abbott and PFM for 10 years or more, and they're highly professional and highly able professionals. And so you, you can be, have, take comfort in what their recommendations are. But the, one of my concerns is, is what is the fiscal impact to the community, to the municipalities, to the county, and eventually to the, to the taxpayers? Is, has there been a fiscal impact study on this proposal?
I'm certain they would have had to do one in Tallahassee, so I don't, we don't do one here. That's, this is a state legislation bill. It's a state statute. We would not do that here.
Well, if it has an impact, I think there is an ordinance we have that says if there is a fiscal impact on, on any piece of the legislation, it has to have a fiscal impact statement.
Yeah, once, once again, Peter, this is not in our jurisdiction. This is in the jurisdiction of the city of West Melbourne, and I think everybody knows that here. So we have one obligation tonight, and that's to vote on whether or not to approve the FHA bond, and that's it.
Well, granted, but I think...
We can talk later. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Deisha.
So I live in 740 Bottom Way, and obviously, my speech is so that, more like a request, so you will vote for no, and that's why I'm wearing a red shirt. I'm an engineer. If there is a proper study is being done for the additional population, I am very sure it, it'll, the result will be bad and definitely not a good idea for, like the people mentioned before, increased money for infrastructure and increased population, which has led to increased crime, also increased accident, also increased everything. So overall, it's not a good decision. Second... it's not New York. It's Florida. I hope you all can agree. This is downtown. We don't build buildings in downtown. It's not safe for the resident, incoming resident, or possible residents. It's not safe for the residents who are already living there. And there are way better places around the town where it's safer for the population that, let's say, need this housing. Why not there? Why here? It's not a good location. It's not safe for anyone. So, overall, I feel that this is just for, not for the right reasons. So, I hope you can take the right decision and vote for no. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you so much. Okay, I believe that wraps up our comments, and we'll turn it back over to the board for their discussion. Do you, how much time do you need? Come on.
Thank you. I just wanted the opportunity to address some of the public comment for the benefit of the public and the board members. We heard a lot about the concern for traffic. And, of course, the city of West Melbourne has land development regulations and transportation concurrency. It's governed by Florida statutes. We'll have to comply with that. We'll have to meet those requirements. And none of that is preempted by anything in Live Local.
I know that.
Okay. The other, there was some discussion about the legal sufficiency. The board has in their package a legal sufficiency memo from the Bervard Housing Finance Authority. There was some other mention from the public about the funding for the development. That 16 million, $750,000 in bonds are bonds that we are purchasing and providing the funding for. There is no public funding coming for that. There was a question about our ability to apply for these bonds at the state. We can do that, but there isn't currently available bonding for elderly at the state level.
Okay, Scott, you're going to have to...
I think those are the only items.
You're going to have to wrap it up. Thank you so very much.
Those were the items. Thank you.
All right, let's turn this back over to the commission. Commissioner?
Can I ask?
Who are you to call a point of order, Sore?
As a citizen.
Can I ask him questions?
You're out of order. Yes. If you continue, I will ask one of these sheriffs to remove you. We are conducting this business and this meeting correctly. I do not need you shouting out from the audience, and I will not tolerate it. So, if you continue, okay, stop. No, you cannot. You're done. Stop. Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, sir. Last meeting, I let you guys know that this is a flow-through for funding for other people to buy bonds at tax-exempt status. So, we're not approving the project. And our vote tonight's just giving other people opportunity for an investment. They're going to build the project. And I'm very thankful that they went ahead and had the community meeting. I wouldn't have minded if you would have left it with young families too, because I see the need for that as well. But, I can see where you made a little bit of an adjustment there, I think probably for political purposes for the people that were having concerns. It's a beautiful project. You do have to comply with traffic studies and all those things. But, again, I'm not voting on that project. I'm just voting on the funding. So, I am going to vote in favor of this tonight to approve the funding for it, because we have never not voted on that, and I don't think that we have that ability. Let me tell you this. It's affordable housing. It's not, no income for people housing. It's people that have funds. But, I don't know if you guys, if you have your homes, you don't get it with these young families and people trying to find a place to live. There is nothing affordable. And your other option is going to be soon, you're going to be adding on to rooms in your houses and letting all your kids live in there and raise their families. It's getting quite disturbing. I serve on the Affordable Housing Board. These are discussions consistently. It's been on the ballot here locally. It was voted through overwhelmingly to start a trust fund here for affordable housing. So, it's a situation. I don't know if I would have done it the same way the state did, but you guys need to call your state reps, because they're the ones that voted that part through with whatever adjustments that need to be made. But, again, we're just approving the funding, and I will be voting in favor to approve the funding tonight.
Is there any other comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
You might have to pass the second.
Commissioner Pritchett, would you please take the floor?
Yes, sir.
I will second the motion.
Okay.
You want to continue on?
All in favor, say aye.
I wanted to have some discussion if you don't want to.
Okay, we still have a discussion, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I feel the pain of everybody in this room. I understand it. I feel it. And as you well know, we do not have jurisdiction over Senate Bill 102. I checked prior to the meeting tonight with the Chief of Staff, the Governor's Office, the Chief of Staff, the President's Office, Chief of Staff of the House Office, and asked if there was any proposals or any amendments coming in, and there may be amendments coming in later, on the Live Local bill. And as of this particular point in time, no. The only thing that I can suggest that the city of West Melbourne does is pass to get together and do an ordinance to tighten up some of the statutes. I'm not an attorney. I'm not going to tell you how to do that. But, these folks that came out here tonight have a project that is a project that is going to create low-income housing for a number of people, whether it's 20%, 30%, or seniors, or whatever. The other side of the coin here tonight is that affordable housing is extremely important. For us to deny, and I have no idea how this board is going to vote, obviously, we have a sunshine law situation, but you're going to test me here shortly, and it's not going to be pleasant. So, the board is going to have to make a decision on what is in the best interest of the general public. We certainly have heard your side. We have not heard a, we have not asked the people that need this kind of housing to be here tonight. And if we did, we would have a giant room filled with conflicting wants and conflicting needs. So, I feel that affordable housing is absolutely necessary. I will be voting yes to approve the bond. And from there, I don't know what's going to happen. So, I do appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I think we've been very fair and listening to everybody. And whatever happens, happens this evening. So, at least, thank you. All right, I've got the chair back. Any more discussion in regards to this? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
The motion fails. Their approval of the bond was not issued. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight, and you should go to the city of Melbourne. You won, okay? That's what happened. There you go. The bond was not approved. No clapping. Thank you so much.
I have an amendment on the second, on the next item.
All right, thank you.
Ah, boy. All right, if you please would, if you please would be quiet. We still have to conduct
a meeting. Thank you so much.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so you're on G2?
We're on I's.
We're on I, right.
How do you do that?
We are on I1, the Legislative Intent and Permission to Advertise an Ordinance Regarding the Housing Financing Authority Hearing Notification and Municipal Participation Requirements. Morris, did you want to handle this?
Thank you, sir. This is an item that came out of, out of actually the previous item at the board's last meeting, when you considered the venue at Heritage Jokes Bond Approval Request. The board asked me to research whether you could impose additional notification requirements on bond finance issues because of the statements of some of the residents who came out and said they had not received the notice of the TEFRA hearing conducted by the Housing Finance Authority. So, I did that research. I believe that the board can impose those additional notification requirements. I coordinated with the District 3 Commissioner Office, excuse me. And this is a request for Legislative Intent and Permission to Advertise an Ordinance that would come back to you at your December 19 meeting, that would add additional notification requirements, including notification to property owners within 500 feet of a proposed project, notification to a municipality if the project's within municipal borders, and also required to be placed on our publicly accessible website, Legal Notices section.
All right, any comments, Commissioner Felton?
I have an amendment, if you would consider a friendly amendment, that the hearing take place in a municipality or a zip code before going to the board, county commissioners. And I say that because, obviously, there are places in unincorporated Bervard where these issues will come up. And so, I think that would be unfair for, to have it, you know, outside that area. So, if we would amend that to the hearing take place in a municipality or a zip code before coming to the board. Thank you.
I do believe Ronaldo wanted to speak in regards to this point. I see you have a card here. Would you like to address this issue? All right, well, thank you. Come on up.
The idea of having the meeting for, and notices to people in the area where a project is being developed is very important to have. That I definitely agree with. And I think there needs to be more work done on this. I'm going to acquiesce my time to that issue at this point, since I believe that there should be amendments added to this. And I will speak with my District 4 representative going forward, so that he gets the ear for me, and probably I'll be informed about it too.
Thank you very much, sir. Commissioner Felton, anything more? Does anybody accept the amendment that Commissioner Felton is putting on there?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve Legislative Intent and Permission to Advertise and Direct Staff of Prayer and Ordinance, amending Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 3 of the Bervard County Code of Ordinance pertaining to the Housing Finance Authority to provide for additional TEFRA hearing notification and municipal participation requirements with the friendly amendment by Commissioner Felton.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion by Commissioner Tamia, seconded by Commissioner Felton. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Morris, for your hard work on that. We appreciate it. All right, let's go to I2, which is the approval of the lease renewal for Nana's House. And I think Kim Froj is here from Nana's House. Kim, did you want to make some comments real fast?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, please.
First of all, thank you all so much for your past support. I truly appreciate you all. My name is Kim Froj, and I am the volunteer founder and executive director for Nana's Children's Home, also known as Nana's House. You guys have supported us in the past 10 years, and I truly appreciate that. Just a quick update. We currently have 18 families here in Bervard County serving, we have about 70-something kids within all of those families total, and we continue to grow daily. What we do is we provide safe, loving homes for neglected, abused, needy, or abandoned children in our community. And we do it with a 100% volunteer staff. We have no paid staff and no state funding. And the reason I'm here is to ask if you would please renew our lease for the next five years. We need that building that you guys donate to us, and we truly appreciate you all considering renewing that. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Our gated community is located right down the road from that house, like two blocks. And that's, we built that gated community with 100% volunteer builders and about 98% donated contractors and about 98% donated materials. And we couldn't do what we do without you guys. We're truly just old-fashioned charity where the community comes together to help those in need, and it happens to be neglected, abused kids. And I just thank you all so much from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for us. We've been serving kids for 16 years in Bervard County with all volunteers.
Kim, thank you so much. Is there any discussion in regards to this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Felton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, your district. You're good, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Pritchett seconds. I don't think there's any discussion needed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thanks, Kim, very much.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a blessing.
Thanks for your good work.
And Merry Christmas to you all. Thank you very much.
I'd like to vote for Nana's House.
All righty. We now need to go to some additional approval for Tourist Development Council on Major Event Grants Program recommendations. And I want to find out if the sponsor, the person that throws the Renaissance grant is here. Would you come up, please, so I can ask you a few questions, if you don't mind? Did you?
I didn't know if Peter was going to introduce it.
I'm going to ask Peter to introduce it before he speaks, if you don't mind. Peter, go ahead, sir, if you would.
Yes, sir. Thank you, commissioners. This is three major event grants coming from the TDC, $50,000 for Thunder on Cocoa Beach Vote Races, Bervard Renaissance Fair, $25,000, and Space Coast State Fair for $25,000.
Okay. Would you put, state your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Peter Mulhouse.
Peter, how are you?
Good.
My only question is, is that I've got some reports back from a couple of your vendors that they had not been paid. And there's a total of, from what they tell me, up to $18,000 worth of unpaid invoices. And it makes me a little nervous to move forward with giving you a $25,000 grant until I asked you what you plan on doing with those invoices.
That's, I understand that. We did. We had some struggles the last few years. We dealt with a couple of hurricanes. We dealt with COVID. We worked our tails off to keep the Renaissance Fair open. We also do one in Sarasota at the same time. So, it was a struggle for us. Last year, we had an accounting error that showed its face. It's, I guess we should say its ugly face at the end of the event, which we didn't catch. It was a spreadsheet error that caught us by surprise after we had made investments. But, we've already started to pay on those invoices already. And they should be all cleaned up by the first week of the Renaissance Fair.
And what is that date?
It starts the first week of January.
Okay. So, your intention is, is to get them paid as soon as possible?
Oh, yeah, without a doubt, yes.
And you're putting that on the public?
And the one I didn't even find out.
You're putting that on the public record tonight?
Correct, yeah. The one I didn't even find out about until last week.
Okay.
So, it caught me by surprise.
All right. Well, I think everybody here understands problems, and I just wanted to make sure that it was put out to the public, just to make, and I'm not trying to embarrass anybody. I just want to make sure that if we're going to be involved with you as a county, that you take care of your responsibilities to your vendors.
And we'll do, and we do that. We've been doing it for nine years, so.
All right. I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion tonight? Commissioner Tamia?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's news to me. Help me here. I'm looking at your budget from last year.
Yeah.
And it looks like you're showing a, according to your numbers, not mine, a $207,395 budget. Can you explain to the board how you are deficient $18,000 if you're showing a 207, just from last year, $207,395 profit?
That's when we discovered the error. The budgets were done prior to us discovering the error and the mistake that was going on on the spreadsheets. It was the last week that we received, the budgets were done, for this grant were done, I believe, in April, early April. We discovered the errors. We started to discover the error on the spreadsheets, which we use spreadsheets to do all of our payments and everything and manage our business. The way we've done it for nine years, it was discovered after the fact that that was going on. We use QuickBooks, and we use our CPA to figure it all out.
So, Mr. Chair, is your...
Yes, sir.
So, the budget I'm looking at here, by your own account, is completely false?
It's, well, I wouldn't say it's false. It was accurate at the time that we put it together, the best we knew.
Okay. Do you have an updated one to share with the board? We're talking about handing over $25,000. And by your own admission, what you've handed to us is not valid.
Well, just the bottom profit line, there was cost that increased. We had some vendor invoices that we didn't know existed. We had some entertainment costs that were higher than what we had budgeted for. That caught us by surprise. So, that obviously reduced that bottom.
We're talking about handing over $25,000, and by your own admission, what you've handed to us is not valid.
Well, just the bottom profit line, there was cost that increased. We had some vendor invoices that we didn't know existed. We had some entertainment costs that were higher than what we had budgeted for, that caught us by surprise. So that obviously reduced that bottom line number dramatically.
To, can you give me, can you help me out here?
It didn't, we didn't end up with a profit for the year.
Okay, so you.
We took a loss for the year.
Okay, so you lost more than?
Correct.
I mean, your numbers were more than $200,000 off.
Right, that's correct.
Okay, that start, follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, please.
A couple things. I looked over your packet, I'm confusing, are you for, are you a for-profit corporation or a not-for-profit?
We are a for-profit corporation. We also have a nonprofit arm that we use, Brevard Renaissance Fair Charitable Foundation.
Okay, you are a for-profit, okay. And then, next question here, I looked at question number 19 on your, and you might have already answered this one, actually, by saying your budget is completely off, I mean, I think the numbers. 19, I think, asks a whole bunch of ancillary revenue streams. You were quite detailed on that. You said vendor fees, ticket sales, alcohol sales, some of which I might have had while at your event, games, percentage of food sales, package sales of mead, merchandise sales, camping fees, I didn't know that you collected camping fees, great, as well as all your social media being monetized.
Correct.
Okay, so those are all revenue sources?
Those are all revenue streams.
Great, wonderful. So let's go back to your budget here. Now, we're not talking expenses, we're talking revenue now. So all the errors that you were talking about were added expenses, not added revenue, correct?
Okay.
Okay, so I looked at your budget, and your budget has under income, one line, that's not true, I'm fibbing, two lines. One is admission, which is people that enter into the gate, right?
Right.
But on 19, you listed nine.
But they don't give us the opportunity to list every item on there. I think they just give us one line to put income.
Other income, you could add lines to all this stuff. How much did you?
I wasn't aware, I wasn't aware of that. We just used the one line to put in the total.
So, I'm sorry, what is admission? Is it people that enter through the gate?
Correct.
Is it percentage of alcohol sales?
It's all included, it was all inclusive in there. I only saw the one line, so I put the entire total amount in the one line.
I've got contracted service revenue, contribution from individuals, corporate contributions, government support, federal, state, local, foundation support, other income, subtitles also, you can change, you can add, you can subtract. I'm just wondering.
Right.
What of this document is accurate? By your own admission, the expenses is far off. What of, what of the income is accurate? Now, remember, you're asking taxpayers for $25,000 here.
To promote Brevard.
To promote Brevard?
Right.
Okay.
That's what the money is used for.
Well, I don't know.
We use that money to promote Brevard Renaissance, we use it to promote Brevard and bring people from out of county, into the county.
But I don't have that here. By your own admission, the document you gave me is incorrect. So I don't have those numbers. Mr. Chair, I appreciate you coming up here, because goodness gracious, there's no way I'd come and ask people for $25,000 when my budget was hundreds of thousands of dollars off, and I have left some vendors, you know, tens of thousands of dollars short. So kudos for you showing up. You certainly have, you know, a better disposition than I would. I'm going to be down on this until at least I get a budget that by own, the own person who's submitting is somewhat accurate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would you be kind enough to make a motion? Oh, Commissioner Pritchett, I keep on seeing Felton.
I know, and you don't want to call him, do you?
No, I don't want to call him Rita, he'll punch me.
Sir, we did this to the events last year, and this is what the boat show gives us now.
Okay.
And so they give us the complete listing of.
I can generate a complete.
Right, and let me ask you this, last year you had $25,000, this year you're projecting $100,000?
Of what?
Of people attending.
We, we had $85,000, $85,000 people last year, according to the numbers.
I got a $25,000 numbers from.
I think it was out of county.
That's out of county, that's more than likely out of county.
Okay.
35% of the people that come to the event are out of county.
Okay, so.
And our goal this year is 100,000.
Okay, that, well, good, that's much better than what I was looking at for your projection of revenues when I asked for the funds. Thank you. Commissioner Tamaia, I agree with him completely on what you turned in. I can't pass this either, and even something else on it, you know, you have total income listed, and it makes it look like you're making 1.4 million, and income is the, you go with your accountant and get that fixed, because you are for profit, you have to have somebody that can do your books.
Right.
So you just got to get that turned in better. And I, again, I have concerns always when people do other operating expenses, and it's the largest amount of expense they have, you're going to need to kind of.
I'd like to answer that one.
You can, but you've got a lot of work to do here, and I don't want to just pick on you right now.
But I want you to understand what I do there, is we do the budget so far in advance, so many months in advance, we don't know what's going to happen down the road.
I do budgets all the time, and I can tell you what's going in my budget and why, because I've learned how to do them. If you're able to put 180,000 in there and not know what it's going to be, that's, that's not going to fly with me on the accountant. So you've just, I don't want to pick you apart, but you're, I'm not going to vote for this.
I only did that because of the cost, like the park increased 30 some percent on us this year.
I'm just telling you, it's not going to work with me tonight.
Okay, that's fine.
You've got an opportunity to go back and fix it, or I'll vote, no, it's up to you with what you'll do. But I am comfortable with the boat races and the Space Coast Fair, I love what they do, but they've already done the project, so I'm going to ask for them to come back with actuals on the budget before I'm going to vote for that amount. So that's where I'm at, guys. I'll vote yes on Thunder. I'm going to vote to table the Space Coast Fair, do they come back with the actual numbers so we can look at those?
I need a motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do you want to do them one at a time?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve Thunder on Cocoa Beach?
I'll second. Oh, I don't have the floor, I'm, I'm the chair. Commissioner Felton?
Well.
Yes, second, or you want comments? Commissioner Goodson?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Tamaia, you have comments on that?
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One for if anyone here is with Thunder on Cocoa Beach, yeah, just a quick question.
Sure.
You did not include, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Carrie Bartlett.
Mr. Bartlett, you did not include the revenue estimate for 2024 on this, in this submission, is that correct?
I don't think we went out that far, no. We have not submitted.
Well, I mean, this, this next, this next one.
We have not submitted a budget for 2024 at this point.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, so they did not, so that's an issue, that's an issue to me, because that's, you know, an estimate, it would have been nice. Second of all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you win.
I do have a couple of questions for the board, and this is more philosophy as we move forward. It's not got anything to do with you, because I want to, you did a very good job with most of the budget here. I know that we asked for some improvements, and you went far beyond. Those were just estimates, we're not holding you to it, but we'd like to, from my perspective, I would like to see it. But my questions to the board are, we're providing a pretty big stipend, or the county's providing a pretty big stipend to this, and yet Cocoa Beach, the city of Cocoa Beach is actually a large beneficiary of this. So I'm wondering, you know, more than $18,000, we're basically passing through to the city. In fact, I think, you know, you even gave money to like a softball or a lacrosse thing. It feels as though that we're just subsidizing the cities here, which causes a little bit of concern for me. If it doesn't here, I'll never bring it up again. And the second thing, and I brought this up, but there's a little bit more of a board, a little bit different of a board here, we have a, the county park rental fee, that's $1,500, and this organization, a for-profit organization, then monetizes that. So by, by your numbers here, they make a little bit more than $7,000 in parking fees, so.
Well, can I correct you on that? Because.
If you would let Commissioner Tamaia finish, or then.
And I was wrong, by your own admission, it's 7,074, so I was off by 74, I mean, so I'm just wondering, if we're okay with that aboard, I'll never bring it up again, but it seems a little weird that, you know, we allow them to use a park for X, and then they turn around and monetize it for, you know, four or five times more than that. If we're okay with that, great, if not, that's fine, too. So that was my point, but my larger one was, I would have liked to have seen the estimate for 2024.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, I missed that. I was so excited about all of their data, but I've got to tell you, I do like your project, and you did go in the hole last year. And so I'm going to support this when you come back with the revenue, because you know, we did it to you last year, and you came back with all those estimates. I'm going to ask that you come back with the budgeted revenue as well?
Oh, for 2024?
Yeah, and you did a great job last year, you had a great product, it really did what you were going to do, and so if, I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve this and just have it come back, we did it to you last year, and you were such a good sport, and you did it, and you got all the numbers.
So what we've done in the past is just added approximately 10 to 15%, and it's been very close. This is our 15th year of doing this?
If that's your statistics of what it increases, that would be good to bring it back, and then will we have it written out?
Sure.
See, because we're trying to outline this for everybody bringing in for these funds, and so we have stayed true to form it, it became such a good product last year.
Thank you.
And it was exhausting. So, yeah, Commissioner Tamaia, good catch on that.
And if I could, on the park issue, we give the parking revenue to the Rotary and the Kiwanis that both share in the parking revenue, and the Freedom Fighters get the park.
When you're at the bottom of a hole, quit digging.
Okay.
Okay? You know, you're going to be all right if you just get everything back here, give us a new report, I think you're probably, I think the board's going to pass this later on.
All right.
Now, I do, is there anybody else that's got comments? Commissioner Goodson, yes, sir?
Thank you, Chair. We have an opportunity here tonight to really set a precedent. If we vote for this approval, John Tamaia will never bring it up again. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, he will.
Oh, boy. Pass the bread, here comes the baloney.
Now, let me ask Commissioner Tamaia this, does your proposition still stay in play when he comes back and we vote it through, Commissioner, is that true, or is it only tonight?
I brought, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I brought a, I brought up an issue, a financial issue. If we're okay with setting up a mini CRA that is paying more money to Cocoa Beach out of our tax dollars, and the board is largely, I won't bring up that issue again. So, yeah, absolutely, that's the other reason, and that was no fault, and it's largely because of what you did this last time, that we have a good template to work with. So I really do, I really do appreciate the time and effort, and I'm sure it is only a 10 or 15%, you'll put it in there, and I'm sure you'll get it. And I'm sorry, but I did not, I'm just looking real quickly, as an expense here, I did not see an expense to the Kiwanis Club or anything like that on.
So it goes to the Freedom Fighters, and?
Where is that, wouldn't that be an expense?
I don't have the budget in front of me, but, so, I don't do the budget, it's a gentleman that owns a lot of restaurants here in town, and.
See, the problem is, you just added information, the budget doesn't look like it's supporting it, right? Am I missing it? Am I missing it?
It should be a line item for Freedom Fighters, a donation. I thought it was 17,000 last year, this past May.
I mean, it's, I'm old, and these are tiny, but words, I'll, will you look and make sure that it balances out there and all that good, listen, you're paying the people to park the cars or whatever, which is more than what some of your counterparts did, so I appreciate that.
Yep, we don't do this for money.
All right, so, would I, anybody else have any other comments, or are we?
I was just going to make a motion to have it all brought.
Go ahead, that would be good.
Have it all brought back with the missing.
Get it to Peter as soon as I can.
Yeah, yeah, and you do a good job, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody, thank you.
On that one, or all?
All of them.
All three.
Yeah.
So just so that we have an understanding.
Give them an opportunity to fix it.
What's happening is, is that you all three that were up for the grants will resubmit your reports to Peter, and Peter will get them back to us, and we'll hear them as soon as possible. But be very thorough, because we have people on this board that have lots and lots of research, and I can assure you, you will be embarrassed if you don't do cross all your Ts and dot all your Is. So we appreciate what you do, we want to give you the money, but we also want to protect the general public. Anything else on that that we need? All right, so let's go ahead and move on to.
I think you need a motion.
Oh, I thought we'd, I thought we'd had a motion, okay.
We've got to make a vote, Doug.
Okay.
I need a motion.
I'm new here at this chair job, come on, quit picking on me. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Who was the second?
Commissioner Felton, were you second?
You were the second.
I will, I will second.
Okay. All right, so let's go back to county manager approval of 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting schedule. What are we going to do with that, sir? Are you going to bring that up?
There's, there's two options for the board's consideration. The first option was one that would reduce the number, actually, which would combine the zoning meetings from Thursday night with the Tuesday night meetings, if the board was interested in that, and that was option one in your package and part of the attachment to the agenda. The second is the traditional one that we've used for several years, type of schedule, meeting schedule, and that's option B, that's also attached to the agenda as a, an attachment. So we're looking for board direction on that.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Felton?
I had a couple of thoughts on this in the first option to combine the meetings, just strictly from what we might save in terms of money. I believe that we have at least a couple of facilities folks here, we see Doug, each one of these meetings, and I think he has someone. We have the security out there for the third meeting, the metal detector, all of that. We have always two members of BCSO here, which we appreciate very much. We would save that if we didn't have the third meeting. And then also, we have the Space Coast Government TV folks who stay here for the third meeting, and not to mention, and I'm hard to quantify this, the number of county staff and directors who also stay here for these meetings. So if we were to go with the first option, I think we would save all of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to request we go ahead and stick with status quo, and here's the reason why. When we first came on, we moved one of the morning meetings tonight to give the public opportunity, if they worked during the day, to be able to make a night meeting. And another reason it might be good to do this is, is you're going to find out, these meetings can get very, very long, and when you add the people just trying to change zoning on with the regular meetings, it's going to add quite a late night for people having to sit and get through some of that, those items. And another thing is, is I kind of like, I'm sorry, personal, too, I've kind of fit into this schedule for the last seven years, and I've got like a few other jobs I got to do, and I have to wake up very early in the morning on Wednesdays, I do a radio program at 6:30 in the morning. So if we're out till 11 o'clock at night, and I did that on the city of Titusville, and it wasn't a good experience, and by the time you get that late, you just get mad at everybody and vote no to everything. So I'm going to just request that if you guys would just maybe hang this out a few more months here till you unload me and then re-figure it out then later, but this seems months here till you unload me and then re-figure it out then later. But this seems to be, has been a good thing for the public. So I'm gonna ask that we just stick with status quo of what we have been doing.
Commissioner Tobias, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And while I do appreciate Commissioner Felton's thought on the potential savings, he is absolutely correct. And the benefits to not only staff but us as elected officials, combining meetings would provide one less opportunity for the public to make comment. And second of all, it would cause citizens to endure extended hours of regular meetings before the zoning meetings would take place or vice versa. And the reason it's important, what comes first, is many citizens employ attorneys and are sitting out here while their attorney is, you know, burning hundreds and hundreds of dollars an hour. So whether the citizens are waiting or whether the petitioner is waiting there with an attorney, there certainly would be some additional costs. So it's certainly a balancing act.
Do I have a motion on?
Wait a minute, whoa.
I'm just gonna ask if somebody else wanted to talk.
Yes.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Goodson.
After checking on this, the last nine zoning meetings were 10 minutes or less. You know, I mean, so it's, I don't understand why we're doing this. And I understand if, Commissioner, if you don't want to, if you've got a busy schedule, I understand. But the cost savings and Commissioner Tobias, I can't imagine you wouldn't want that. But still, I'm definitely for this, but that's entirely, it's a vote and we'll proceed on. And thank you, Chair.
I'm gonna need a motion.
I make a motion to stay with option two.
There's a motion on the floor to stay with option two. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. Commissioner Felton?
I'm gonna yield to Commissioner Pritchett on this. I think I'm the deciding vote here. So I'm going to, I'll vote with you today.
And then I think we can revisit this in a year. I think that's fair.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion regards to this? All in favor of option two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. All right, it carries and we'll go with option two. So thank you so much for that. Board reports, county manager.
I have no report.
County attorney.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Goodson?
Only thing I have to report is the Florida State loss by the election committee and God bless them.
Commissioner Tobias? No report?
No, Mr. Chair. For once, I'm gonna agree with Commissioner Goodson over there. As someone who is a strong gator, I cannot believe the travesty that took place in Tallahassee. And I still can't believe that, you know, Matt Wallace is out there and his smile has not rescinded because Alabama does not deserve to be there, even close. But today, as the Vice Vice Chair, is National Blue Jeans Day, which is kind of interesting. Useless Florida fact, with $1.4 trillion economy, Florida's economy is the fourth largest in the country. If Florida were a sovereign nation, it would rank as the world's 16th largest economy, according to International Monetary Fund, ahead of Indonesia and just behind Mexico. This day in Florida history, on this day in 1945, a flight of the U.S. Navy aircraft known as Flight 19, consisting of 14 crew members, disappeared during a training flight off the coast of Florida. A pair of PBM marine-flying boats off the, an air station north of Fort Lauderdale in attempt to search for the missing craft. However, one of them seemed to follow Flight 19's lead by suddenly vanishing off the radar. The remainder, the five-flight folks and 19 aircraft, all 27 crew members, were never found. Unfortunately, a negative day in Florida history. I look for the positives, I really do. County employee recognition, Jennifer Thompson, environmental specialist number three, natural resources. Jennifer loves that her office is mostly outdoors. She spends her days conducting illicit discharge in stormwater pond inspections, water quality sampling, sampling and analyzing data. She's been with the county five years. Jennifer was kissed by a sea lion when she was eight years old and became obsessed with marine biology. She never looked back. She loves scuba diving, bowling, roller skating, attending events and festivals, and watching comic book based movies. She is a passion, passionate volunteer since moving to Brevard in 1988 and is involved in organizations such as Keep Brevard Beautiful, Space Coast Science Education Alliance, Brevard County Public Schools, Indian River Lagoon, and A Day in the Life of the Lagoon. She chooses organizations with missions directly improve the water quality in our area or to educate residents about the science. Jennifer is also a TV star and was recently featured in both Protect Our Paradise and Flip My Florida Yard, which there are some screenshots including in the PowerPoint. Jennifer, thank you for everything you do, not only for the county, but the environment that we enjoy. Mr. Chair, that's the Vice Vice Chair report. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you for your hard service to us. I got kissed by a sea lion and my wife wouldn't kiss me for a year. All right, well, anyway, Commissioner Felton, any reports?
No.
I have no reports. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got public comments. I apologize. All right. Okay. Sorry about that. Douglas Simon. I guess we're not gonna play Simon Says. Marshall Gilmore. Oh, here you come. Now we are. Come on, Douglas.
Okay, I'm here to discuss the Rockledge Drive trees. I'd like to maintain the status quo as was decided by the commissioners about two years ago. I don't know why it came up again. Unlike the red shirt debate that we just had, this should be a no-brainer. We're looking to save the county money. Don't do anything. We don't want county money. I and the Rockledge Drive Tree Coalition and every resident of Rockledge Drive that I've ever spoken to does not want the live oak trees cut and their beautiful canopies. They're unique. They're unique in Brevard County. I really don't know why the county wants to cut them. The city of Rockledge, which owns the bulk of Rockledge Drive, and the city of Cocoa both support saving the trees. They do everything they can to save the trees, not cut them. Kind of an interesting thing, and two years ago, we went through the same thing. There were a whole bunch of reasons why the county wanted to cut them. They were all proved to be invalid and here we are again. I received a letter recently, very interesting. I just saw it. It came from an employee of the, let's see, the utilities department. And, yeah, Brevard, I'm sorry, Brevard County Natural Resources Department. It's section 62-4332 of the Brevard County Code. And basically, it says a specimen tree can't be cut. And the definition of a specimen tree is exactly what these are. The size, the age, the rarity, the special historic value, ecological significance, right on the river, unique. And the follow-up to all this was to say that, well, it doesn't apply because it doesn't. The trees are either a little too small or a little too something or she thinks they're sick. Whereas an arborist we had exactly disagreed with all that and said they're all healthy. And that's it.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Let's go on to the next one, please. Marshall Gilmore. Hello, Marshall.
Hello, thank you. I'm back. I was supposed to be on the agenda for tonight, but there was some miscommunication, so I wanted to wait around and address it. And as an attorney and not billing for all the hours to wait my client, so just to let you all know. I'm brought with me tonight, and the people out here in Green, they're the people that are, we had a lot more originally and there would have been a lot more if I'd have been on the agenda, could say exactly when I'd be talking. But I have with me copies that were made of, over 5,000 people have contacted the coalition and said they're in favor of preserving our street, not having any, you know, canopy cut unneeded. And remember last time when I talked about, we're for a reasonable treatment of that whole drive. We're not asking for nothing to be trimmed, but we know there's some dead trees, but we want to have it, we want to have it done in a reasonable way. So I have these petitions I wanted to bring down tonight. The other thing is, it's ironic that tonight, the two first speakers, one was talking about pedestrian safety and the other one was talking about sporting events. And then you heard other speakers talking about sporting events. And that's what goes on in this, on this drive. And so we need to remember, as county people managing the streets and roads in this county, that those people are using that road. There's multiple use on that road. And I wanted to bring you a copy of 23 U.S. Code 162, which I'm running out of time here. But this is the federal statute that would give us funding. We'd bring money into the county, save Brevard County taxpayers' money because we could get money for grants if we get it into National Scenic Byway. And I only brought five copies tonight, but if you look down to the bottom section, there's certain things that we do wrong on trimming trees, putting it in sewer, whatever, on the repairing area, we could disqualify that. So.
I wanted to remind you, I know my time's up, but I wanted to remind you that we want
to work in partnership with the county, not as attorney to attorney, not as litigants. We want to work as partnership. And so we're asking the county to respect that and respond to that. I just got a whole pile of emails with reports.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, your time is up.
Yeah, okay, I know, but I got...
No, your time is up.
My time is up.
Yes, sir.
I'm a lawyer, I have one last question, all right?
Oh, that's okay. Next case, bailiff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Williams, James Williams.
Good evening. My name is James Williams. I'm a disabled Army veteran. I sustained service-related hearing loss. Due to my hearing loss, I depend on an A scale decibel meter to assist me in complying with the Brevard County maximum allowable residential noise level of 60 decibels. From January 20, 2021 to August of 2023, my neighbors filed 80 loud music complaints with the Brevard County Sheriff's Office and two loud music complaints with the Brevard County Code Enforcement. Those county agencies measured the decibel level with an A scale decibel meter and did not substantiate a violation of the Brevard County ordinance. However, I was arrested three times and released on my own recognizance. 7 October 2023, three Brevard County sheriff's deputies arrived at my home and cited me for violating the Brevard County Newly Revised Noise Ordinance, Section 46132, noise violation based on the Plainly Audible standard. The sound emitting from my vehicle was measured at 41 decibels. I asked the deputies, did Brevard County change their maximum allowable level? I was told 60 decibel level does not apply to the Plainly Audible standard. Law enforcement has devices which measure sound, just as they have devices which measure speed. Where's the value added or logic with implementing primitive measures such as plainly audible? How does a law-abiding citizen comply with plainly audible? 13 December 2012, the state of Florida versus Richard Catalano, the Florida Supreme Court ruled that plainly audible standard is facially unconstitutional because it is overbroad. It invites arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement and impinges on our First Amendment right. In closing, I'm respectfully requesting the Brevard County Commissioners to remove the plainly audible standard from the county noise ordinance. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you, James.
Good evening.
Hey, how are you?
To follow up, Mr. Williams, in a court filed affidavit, Mr. Steve Brayden stated, "I've been working continuously with the county commissioner and East Precinct BCSO as they try to remedy the neighborhood impact created by Mr. Williams." I believe Mr. Brayden has deceived the commission into changing the noise ordinance to serve his own purposes and target a single individual. I won't repeat the 80 calls that they have gotten from him and still never substantiated anything over 60 decibels. But the sheriff's deputies couldn't cite Mr. Williams under the old law, but with the new ordinance, they were able to give a warning and cite him under the plainly audible clause. At the time Mr. Williams was cited, a video was recorded in which you could not hear the music from approximately 175 feet over the conversation between Mr. Williams and the BCSO. Letting your deputies be the arbiter of what is and what is not too loud is like getting a speeding ticket from an officer standing on the side of the road. If they didn't have to use a radar gun to determine your speed, they would not. If they don't have to use a decibel meter to determine sound level, they will not. The ordinance states that if they don't have a meter, they can use plainly audible. So I believe the decibel meter will never again be carried by or in the vehicle of a Brevard County deputy because it may prove that the citizens are not actually breaking the ordinance.
Okay, thank you so very much for coming tonight. Sandra Sullivan, we haven't heard from you from at least 20 minutes. Welcome back to the podium.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So I changed out what we're gonna speak tonight because we only get two minutes, even under public comment instead of three minutes. So I want to talk about SB 102 as the Agenda 2030 bill, the you all own nothing and be happy law. So let's talk about a little bit of history. So as a result of the housing crisis in 2008 and because of taking away local rule for short-term rentals, we have the situation where private equity firms have already purchased up to about 30% of real estate in Florida. So in 2021, 30% of Orange County, 25% of Jackson, 25% of Tampa, and about 20% of Brevard County. It's been two years since then. So we're halfway to Agenda 2030. And so you can say, oh, it sounds like conspiracy theory, but we're halfway there. What SB 102 does is incentivizes the developers to come in here for projects that are not low income, they're not really affordable housing, they're middle America, the middle America dream of owning your own home and raising your kids, the very essence of what is American along with capitalism, right? This is not American. What I ask you, you were appointed by the governor. You have the governor's ear. You held a fundraiser here. Mr. Tobias's office is next door to Randy Fine's office. You all have connections to our state reps. We need to lean on that because who's gonna be harmed in this is the people. The people are gonna be harmed because this, when you take the largest market of the real estate market and you incentivize the developers, we, the people, will have higher taxes. And you have an obligation to protect us from higher taxes. I would like three minutes next time.
Maybe. Sandra, we'll go back to three minutes in the next meeting. Mary Ann Sawyer? Is that correct?
Sauter.
Sauter? Okay.
Yes.
I got to Mary Ann, right?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
There you go. Go ahead.
Yes, my name's Mary Ann Sauter and I'm here also to speak about James Williams. I want to speak about the new county ordinance, Section 46132. How can a person with hearing loss comply with this ordinance? When James Williams was first approached by the Brevard County Sheriff's deputies about a noise complaint, he purchased his decibel meter so as to be compliant. When he turns on his music outside of his home, he gets a reading and sets the volume at around 50 decibels. Because he cannot with his hearing loss tell if the music is too loud, in August of this year, the commission changed the noise ordinance to allow deputies to use plainly audible standard. How can someone that can't hear as well as law enforcement officers sent to his house regulate his music? Mr. Williams is a disabled Army veteran. He is accustomed to following orders and rules, but the rules and orders have to be defined and measurable. This ordinance leaves the sound level to the discretion of the sheriff's deputies. It would be like putting a maximum weight of garbage cans, 70 pounds, and later changing the standard to the discretion of the garbage man by saying he feels it's too heavy. He has the right to charge the homeowner. How? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ronald, come on up.
We've been here since 5 o'clock. It's 7 o'clock. And I know there were people in the audience, perhaps there needs to be a different method done as to how many speakers there are on an issue. Two minutes is unacceptable and that's where I came out and asked for a point of order. However, I was overruled and just about kicked out. And I don't appreciate that, sir. And you want order, you can have order. And I'm not gonna go any further on that. But what I will also state, another topic, is we have legislation that is going on in... But what I will also state, another topic, is we have legislation that is going on in, as far as the state. You are representatives, and you know the people who are in there, and they should be contacted. What I'm appalled about is the Elvis impersonation of a star who worked very, very hard to accomplish his goals. And at that point, I was upset for the fact that, and now it's reaffirmed, my property tax, not property tax, my insurance premium went up by 57%. 57%. What are we doing here? Are we here for laughs or baloney or what? You guys should be in front of that Cape Canaveral thing going, 50%, 57% is intolerable. That is disgusting. There's something going on in this state that is not right. You want to take my property? I'll make sure that it's not yours.
Robert. Thanks for being patient, Robert.
Sure. All right. I'm sorry about, I'd like to say that you threw me off, but if anybody knows me, it's not that, I just am horrified by public speaking. Yeah, two minutes. BCC 97, Section 3, Subsection.
Space Coast TV, could you?
Yes, so if you see that.
Thank you so much.
This is updated version. It says that there must be a board vote. Now, there wasn't, under Robert's rules, a board vote. You told everybody that there would be two minutes, and under Robert's rules, I believe, and then under BCC 97. Now, Robert's rules does not dictate fully, but BCC 97 does, so. It says.
Okay, I have the discretion to overrule.
It's still my time.
Okay, but let's, you don't need to preach to us about Robert's rules of order.
Shut up. It's just still my time.
Okay, what is your point here?
My point is, not Robert's rules. My point is BCC 97, which is Brevard Code, right? That says every person addressing the board shall have three minutes, although it says that the chair may override it and then goes to a period, not a comma or subjugated by legal writing, but a period. The board may vote to amend time limits on public hearings, right? And this was a continuance of a little public hearing. So if it was a continuance of a public hearing, I believe that the three minutes should be right, because that just gives the public, I'm sorry, second, I'm not good at public speaking. And you're a little bit different than the other commissioners that have done it, you're a little more to the point, so, sorry about that, if I.
That's okay.
Shaking, but I think that it should have been three minutes under this section, where it says the board may vote to amend time limits on public hearings, and the board did not vote to do that.
I appreciate what you're saying. If we would have given them three minutes instead of two minutes, do you think the outcome would have been different?
I don't think any which way, other than what BCC 97 says.
No, I'm just asking you a question, because they got two minutes and their outcome came exactly what they wanted to have. So, I mean, I guess your point is, is I made the decision to go with two minutes because there are so many people here, and, and that's my choice, and I made that. I appreciate you giving me a lecture on Robert's rules of order, but.
I was not giving you on Robert's, this is BCC 97, this is Brevard Code 97. And I'm sorry, sorry, I know, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I know that this is a new position, I'm not trying to say anything about that, I'm just trying to.
Okay, you've got, let's go ahead, and you've got another minute and 13 seconds. What is it that you'd like to say?
Okay, there's more. All right. So underneath, because I've actually been to a Florida Housing Corporation meeting, so if you look at the addresses here, and this happened before, but this address is different than where it was held. That's another issue. So if we want to talk about public meetings and having them presented to the public in a certain way, that's probably another issue. But on behalf of that, in regards to that, I'm just wondering, the neighbors' Gilvin Nickerson memo for that specific bond, is the same attorney that's here, were they ones that you hired? And that's, I'm not, this is rhetorical, were they ones you hired, or how does that work? Do you ask them a question because they're the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's attorneys? I just didn't understand that part, so, how that was done. And I did try to call your officer to understand this better, because I don't want to come to public forum and ask this stuff, and, you know, I just don't, I didn't get a call back, but that's fine.
Well, if you got a call to my office, I would have known about it, and I would have returned your call, so I'll check on the, on the log.
It was Friday at 4:00, and I called your Tallahassee office, Interstate Office.
Oh, you called the law office?
I called your local number.
And the Tallahassee number, which are both the law offices.
No, your local number's online for BCC, for your BOCC district.
Well, I apologize, I did not get any.
Your receptionist was very nice, though, so.
Okay, well, come up to me after the meeting, and I'll give you my cell phone number. How's that?
I'm on your, I'm your Facebook friend, actually, so. I'm sorry, I got hacked.
That's two of us. All right. Holy mackerel, this is getting so much fun, I don't want to quit.
I got a.
Okay, Tom, Commissioner Goodson.
I'd just like the board to know that the attorney that said that he tried, well, tried to get on the agenda but didn't get on the agenda, kind of implied that I was involved in that. There's a certain criteria you have to meet to be placed on the agenda, and we've tried to explain it to him, even sent him to Morris, to get Morris to explain it, but he doesn't want to listen. Okay? Now, I'd like for Mark to come up. Mark, I'd like for you to tell us about the Heritage Highway that he's proposing. Please? Very quickly. If you know anything about it, the Florida historical highway, it takes two years to even be considered. Two years. Now, you got to realize, he hasn't mentioned a thing about the sewer line that we are proposing to clean up the lagoon by doing that. So, you know, and he hasn't mentioned the fact that we're not going through their raping and pillaging and plundering. And even under the Highway Act, it even says that the responsibility falls back to the county, does it not, Mark? Does it not?
Hi, Mark.
I don't care, whoever, just answer the questions, okay? Before you get out of here. Hell, I don't care. If you don't know the answer, go back there and sit down.
Sir Commissioner, as you mentioned, it does fall back to the county, but specifically, he alluded to the fact that, you know, he can bring in money and grants, and that's not specifically accurate. In order for the federal government to consider it, it first needs to be considered by FDOT. I've fully researched the issue and spoke with the leads for FHWA and FDOT, and neither one of them are interested in including Rockledge Drive at this time.
And if they were, it would only help them on billboards and maybe too close building to the road right away? Is that not correct?
That is correct. Trees and transportation issues are not subject to, if it was actually approved, billboards are the primary exemption. That's correct, Commissioner.
Now, I have a question for you, Frank. Here's the question. 5,000 people signed a petition, right? That's what he says. Now, there's not 5,000 people up and down that road, but I guess you can go to Washington State, you can go to Alabama, and get people to sign that they want to.
I have no way to verify, Commissioner, where any of those signatures came from.
Well, I would like a copy of them, I'd like, and then I'll take them to my staff, and we'll count them, to see how many is even local or how many is in the state of Florida. I don't know, should we be concerned about putting a sewer line in River Road to correct, help the pollution of the Indian River? Or should we just say that more trees are more important, and the people that live on River Road are special? They're more special than maybe you are? You're, you know, so, but of course, I would like staff to get with him and give him the breakdown of how to be, how to register to be before the board. Because I'm, you know, he calls my office, it's one, and it, it sounds like it's all my fault, and it's not. We gave him instructions, he doesn't want to listen to them, and, you know, I'd like for, I'd like for that to occur, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodson. Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, I just got to respond to that. Commissioner Goodson, I'm disappointed. I was hoping you kept him off. If he's going to sue the county, that's fine, but he shouldn't be up here wasting our time. I don't know why we would give extra time to someone that is threatening to potentially go sue us one way or another. So Commissioner Goodson, I would fully support you in any way possible that we can keep that gentleman's.
You just want to see me get sued, that's what you.
No, no, this, all the board, I said I will join you on there, they can send me a thing.
If you know anything about picking an attorney, you pick somebody that's. It's very well-known, very powerful in Brevard County. You don't pick somebody that just moved here from Washington.
My only point is I support your sentiment.
Well, okay, if I get arrested, I'm.
All right, I want to.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank you guys for complicating my first night as chair. It's been interesting, to say the least. Do we have anything more before we adjourn this meeting? Scott, I don't see your card, but come on up.
Are you with us or against us?
Well, I don't know, truthfully.
Do you want to talk about trees? Go sit down.
I love permaculture, but that's not what I'm here for.
Okay, there you go. Go ahead, Scott.
There's been a great injustice in this county. I'm here for James. He doesn't want to play the race card, but I'm going to play the race card. This is not the 1960s. This is clearly audible. I don't have any faith in that being changed here. I don't really care for legalese or lawyers. His father, last year, had to move away from Brevard County because a man was saying racist rants, saying, "Get this N out of my neighborhood," and firing gunshots. Over 80 police calls. This man doesn't deserve this. His father saw crosses burning. And this plainly audible, 80 police calls? Sergeant Jennings said that he purposely plays the decibel, the meter, the music five decibels under the legal limit, and says that that's assault, or that he's terrorizing his neighbors. He served our country, and he is okay with the neighbor calling him the N-word, but I'm not. This is 2023. He's facing a 25-count frivolous lawsuit last year during Hurricane Ian. They took boulders and blocked him in his driveway, took his easement. We went to the deeds office, that's his easement. Emergency vehicles can't get to his house because they put boulders there. This is, this is unacceptable. I don't know if I'm for you or against you, but I hope that whoever is speaking with Steve Brayden and helped change that audible level to plainly audible, I hope that there is a Title 42 deprivation of civil rights, because this man does not deserve this. He is as square as you can be. He's a rule follower. I'm the exact opposite. And this just shouldn't be happening. I'm here to bring awareness to the situation. We are doing it under hashtag Operation Jaybird. You can find us on Google or YouTube. We're trying to make some noise. We want some remedy to this situation that's going on. So please, just. They put boulders in front of his house during the hurricane and trapped them in there, and we need some remedy to that.
Who's "they"?
About five neighbors around him in the white, Ibis lane.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. James, thank you for your service to our country. Thank you for your service to our country. And I don't know why this is happening to you, but the board has been fully informed tonight. I don't know if anybody else has been informed before, but my ears are all open, and I will look into it myself, so.
We're fascinated we could revisit the plainly audible part of that statute.
Well, no, we've got, the reason for the noise ordinance does not have anything to do with James, okay? It really, we, let me, let me just finish, because we've done enough this night. We've been informed about what's happening with James. But the reason for the noise ordinance doesn't have anything to do with this man. It has to do with short-term rentals, okay? We are having a major short-term rental problem with music that goes 10 times louder than James would ever think of. So that was the reason for the noise ordinance. Noise ordinance was also a plague for all of these frigging cars with the loud music and things of that nature. So there is no discrimination against Mr. Gilmore. We appreciate what he's done. I understand, Scott, what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, okay? Now, all I can do is look into it, and I will do that. All right, thank you so much. I, I understand, and I think I've already given you my answer to what's going to happen. Morris, did you have anything you want to say?
No, no report, sir.
Okay. All righty then. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. The meeting is over, thank you so much. Robert, come here.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.